Call the Broken Arrow City Council meeting to order. We have invocation by Pastor Rich Maganaro.
Wow, we can bow our heads for a word of prayer. Father God, we need your presence. For with your presence, Lord, comes joy. With your presence comes wisdom and understanding. With your presence comes favor. So, Father, I ask for favor tonight upon the city council, the city manager, Lord, the city attorney, all the chiefs that are here. Lord, just upon our city. That you would bless our city, you would watch over our city, you would protect our city. Lord, with all this growth going on, Lord, we can just labor in vain if we don't have you helping us. So, Lord, we ask for your help. And I thank you that this is a city that acknowledges you first and wants your help. So, Lord, in Jesus's name, I pray, this would happen tonight, and you would give this council strength and wisdom and joy as they serve this city, Lord, to fulfill their plans, but, Lord, your plans. Amen. Go for it.
Thank you. All right, roll call.
Pickle.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Wimpy.
Here. Please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance. Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to reapprove the consent agenda at its stance.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Mayor.
Sorry, got it. All right. Item seven, public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions, and awards. Seven A is approval of and authorization for the mayor to execute a proclamation declaring the month of September 2025 as STEM Timber Month. And so, we have a proclamation here. We have Levi here joining us. And so, the proclamation reads as, excuse me. Whereas science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, STEM education is essential to driving innovation, economic growth, and solving global challenges. And whereas introducing students to STEM, my goodness, at an early age fosters curiosity, critical thinking, and inspires future careers in these vital fields. And whereas the city of Broken Arrow values the role of STEM education in preparing its youth with its skills necessary to thrive in an increasingly technological world. So, sorry, I'm glad you're not filming this right now because I can't speak, so sorry. Whereas STEM learning cultivates problem solving, creativity, and adaptability, skills that are vital in all areas of life and career. And whereas Broken Arrow is home to numerous STEM-focused organizations and companies that enrich our community and contribute to scientific advancement. And whereas by championing STEM education, Broken Arrow supports a future-ready community, encourages innovation, and strengthens its appeal as a center for technological progress. And whereas the Tulsa Regional STEM Alliance, TRSA, has been instrumental in expanding STEM opportunities through mentorships, competitions, and events that inspire students and empower educators. Now, therefore, I, Deborah Wimpy, Mayor of the City of Broken Arrow, do hereby proclaim the month of September as STEM Timber, which is very creative, thank you, in the city of Broken Arrow. I encourage all citizens, schools, businesses, and organizations to visit tulsa-stem.org/stemtimber and take part in celebrating and promoting STEM education to inspire the next generation of innovators and leaders. And witness whereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Broken Arrow to affix this 2nd of September 2025. Levi, will you please come forward and share with everyone the really great things that you were doing to STEM creative learning? Did you see what I did there?
Perfect, I love that, I love that. Good evening, councilors. It's such an honor, and Mayor, thank you so much for recognizing this month as STEM Timber. It is an opportunity for us to celebrate STEM because it really is a key part of exciting our youth and inspiring them for their future. We're part of the Tulsa Regional STEM Alliance. We are a nonprofit organization based in Tulsa, but serving the entire region. As of last month, we reached our 1,000,000th student served since 2017 and have given over $1 million in grants to schools, to teachers. And we love to celebrate all the great things that are happening. So, it's our goal that every child has a moment to have their curiosity sparked. And so, this month, over 33, or, excuse me, yeah, well, it is 33, but over 30 events are posted right now that are available to students and their families to find during the month of September at our website.
And that's Broken Arrow included, so it's all areas?
It is all areas included. And also, if you know of another event that hasn't made it onto the list, it's an open invitation to add your event to the list to make sure that every kid has an opportunity to see themselves in STEM and see that future as real and likely for them if they so choose.
And then, finally, you had shared with me that there are grant opportunities for teachers.
Today, we have a $35,000 grant pool open right now that's available for educators and schools and partners who are providing out-of-school time learning for students. So, that's open right now. Later this month, we're celebrating teachers. So, we've celebrated Broken Arrow educators through our Siegfried Excellence in STEM Education Award pretty recently. But it's a $5,000 award for the finalists and another $5,000 award for the overall winner.
Fantastic.
Lots of ways to celebrate our wonderful educators who do thankless work oftentimes.
Yes, absolutely. Well, we're going to come down and take a picture with you.
Love it, thank you. All of them, yes, love them.
All right. Item B is consideration, discussion, and possible approval of and authorization to execute a professional consultant agreement amendment one with Seltzer Schaefer Architects for the construction documents of a new Broken Arrow municipal service building.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Oh, I was just skipping right ahead.
So, do you imagine?
Hold your horses, Shannon, not turn me out. Item 7B, general obligation bond updates.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening to those in the audience as well as those that are home. I am excited because I have several things I want to share with council. Council knows all of these things, but obviously, when you're talking about the initiative that we're under, I wanted to share some information is that last week, we had our first public forum, and we had well over 70 residents that came out. The energy in the room was very exciting. I mean, all of the council members were there, and we had a chance to engage with the residents. There was a lot of enthusiasm. They were aware of the number of projects, and that was very obvious by the number of stickers that they actually placed on, the projects they felt like were the priority. As always, the table that had the most interest was the transportation, which is the asphalt and concrete. Obviously, that's, there's, that part of town, there's a couple of roads folks are very much interested in. So, it was great to see that type of engagement. The next public forum, two of three, is tomorrow night. It's at the Amazing Varsity Center, 6:30 to 8:30. If you came the last one, you can come again. But obviously, we're hoping that we'll have a similar or larger turnout as we did last week to actually get the priorities. Because as a part of the process is council's trying to figure out how to narrow down over a little over $600 million into $400 million for the propositions related to the, basically, the general obligation and our property tax rate. The other thing I wanted to mention was, and as the council members know, during the latter part of August, we had an opportunity with each council member to go to speak to all of the sports user groups that had submitted requests. And we talked to them about the capacity in what would be Proposition Three or Proposition Four and exactly where they are with regard to their request and the capacity. And we talked to them about opportunities and how we could possibly work together to come up with an eighth proposition. And there was tremendous support among the user groups because they understand that obviously, not only are these fields for our kids to play on and adults to play on, but they're also economic development drivers and actually helping our economy. And they were very excited about that. And I'm bringing this up because at the next meeting, or latest in October, there'll be a question about a survey that I'm going to ask council to consider with regard to the user group in sports organizations about how there could be a proposition on the April 7 ballot for the voters' consideration. But obviously, our first step was to, we want to get the opinions. And I understand there was a lot of good feedback about the projects being considered amongst our sports organizations. And they are huge economic development drivers. And obviously, we want to have great facilities for our kids and our adults, and they're highly used. And so, that's something we're going to talk a little bit more about based on conversations I've had with council. So, so far, we're in this point, we're gathering information. After the third forum later this month, we will start to tabulate. Shannon gets to coordinate the tabulations so we can actually show the council members what those priorities are so we can start narrowing things down. But I'm looking forward to tomorrow night, and I know the council will be as well.
Can I just add? I know Charlie had mentioned in our special meeting that these are just renderings. So, on the senior activities center, we're wanting to, of course, bring everything to one side. So, I've had a lot of pickleball players concerned that the roof was not high enough for pickleball. And so, I let them know that it was just a rendering at this point. So, if we can just make that public record. We have not decided one way or the other. I can't imagine us doing away with the pickleball court, but we're not that far in the process yet. So, I just want to make that public. I'm doing their Facebook page, and there's been a lot of enthusiasm about all the bond things, but they want their pickleball court.
Well, you covered it, counselor. People want to see some visuals. And actually, as a part of the public education, which will be the beginning of next year through April 7, there'll be a lot of visuals, especially because council will have set the first meeting in January, what projects will actually make the various propositions. By ordinance, we have to do that at least 75 days in advance of the special election. And so, this fall is going to be extremely busy. And so, obviously, pickleball is a major driver. A lot of folks want this regardless of age. And so, I know the seniors have mentioned that. And so, we'll make sure that that's the decision council makes. We'll make sure that it can accommodate it.
Thank you.
All right.
So, I'll have it, Mayor.
Thank you. Item eight is a citizen's opportunity to address council on general topics related to city business or services. No action may be taken on matters under this item. So, we have one resident signed up, Ms. Edna Osborne. Ms. Osborne, you have three minutes, and the clock will tell you. The colors will count down.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. To thank you again for the work that you have done to keep some of the water from coming across the property at 2301 South 7th Street. And it is one of the properties I think is very important to your city because it comes right into your city, right by your parks. And I think we should beautify that area even more so than what's going on right now. Before, it did a lot of damage to my property. The water that came across from the Knights of Columbus building caused me to have, thank you, lots of damage, some of which the government agency paid for the door. And a fracking lawsuit gave me $1,800 to do some repairing on the property. But there remains a lot of work to get that water stabilized and moved into a big gutter where it doesn't harm our properties. I've had three repairs on my garage door. The last one, they had to replace the motor because when it's offset, it causes the motor to labor, and it killed my motor. So, there's been a lot of, they call it setting. But with water damage, it's greater than just the house setting over a number of years. And I've been in that area now for 19 years. And I would like to see that someone come in and do some repairs on that driveway, which was not my fault. And some of the things that have been done to that house because I use it as a mission. Been there 10 years, praying and fasting for the nation and the world. And it's been on your Facebook page. And I've gotten worldwide recognition for my stand on unity in Oklahoma. So, I planned on staying there, and I planned on dedicating that house one day as a property of historic value. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
So, Ms. Osborne let us know that she was going to come speak tonight. And I think Charlie Bright has some information to share. And I believe her concern is related to the upcoming road widening that the voters approved, that we're currently working on the design for Lynn Lane from 81st to 91st, and then 91st to 100. And she lives just south of the Knights of Columbus building on the west side. So, Charlie, would you mind providing a little bit of information?
Good evening, council, mayor, vice mayor, council members, Mr. Spurgeon, Charlie Bright, Director of Engineering and Construction. Yes, I did hear earlier today when Ms. Osborne stopped by, and she was going to come tonight. She called a couple of weeks ago, and I actually have played phone tag with her since then. So, I've not had the opportunity to speak with her yet. As she mentioned, I know we've done a little bit of work in the area. I think she's mostly concerned with the water coming from Knights of Columbus property towards the residents. And we have tried to grade a swell there. And then, we do have upcoming work on the intersection. I have not had a chance to talk to Ms. Osborne about this, but I will. And my understanding from the previous message, I understood that she was concerned about the intersection work and if it was going to make the situation worse. Proud to say, I've reviewed the plans myself and gone over them. We're not bringing any additional water in the direction towards her house. Most of it's going in the north-south direction along Lynn Lane. So, I don't think there'll be any new concerns. But I do understand she has some other concerns. So, me and my staff will meet with her some more and see if there's anything we can do to help.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Charlie. And Ms. Osborne shows up every now and then, only when she has concerns. So, I definitely want to make sure that we meet with her and she feels very comfortable we're addressing any issues that exist, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Spurgeon, how will we know, like, what the outcome is? Can Charlie send us, or can you let us know just what you find out?
Yeah, Charlie will update me, and then Lori or I will update the council members.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you. All right. Now, on to general counseling business that I tried to skip ahead to. Nine A, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of the reappointment of Michelle Bergwall to the City of Broken Arrow Board of Adjustment for a three-year term expiring May 1.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Spurgeon, Rocky Hinkle, Community Development Director. Board of Adjustment members are appointed to serve three-year terms. The term for Board of Adjustment member Michelle Bergwall expired on April 19, 2025. Ms. Bergwall was appointed to the Board of Adjustments on April 19, 2022 by city council to fill a vacancy created by the resignation of Richard Carter, whose term expired May 1, 2022. Ms. Bergwall has expressed her willingness to continue to serve on the board for another term. Michelle Bergwall has been recommended by Vice Mayor Parks to be reappointed for a three-year term to expire May 1, 2028. Staff recommends you approve the appointment of Michelle Bergwall to serve a three-year term on the Board of Adjustments to expire May 1, 2028.
I had served on several committees with Ms. Bergwall. She is an architect, and she did a lot of work with the Broken Arrow school system. So, we worked with her hand in hand for years. And she would have a lot of knowledge, I felt like, and I think she's done a really good job. So, I would certainly make a motion that we reappoint her to that board.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 9B, consideration, discussion, and possible approval of and authorization to execute a professional consulting agreement. Shannon Marshall.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, and Mr. Spurgeon. My name is Shannon Marshall, Special Projects Division Manager. And for you tonight, this is another step in a new Municipal Services Administration building as we have an amendment to the original architectural engineering design contract with Seltzer Schaefer Architects, aka NARATE. And this is to proceed into schematic design, design development documents, and then help all the way through bidding and construction. We're super excited to continue working with them as they were awarded this project, the traditional Request for Qualification project, last year. And they're going to be helping us expand and go into the next steps. We've gotten a great feedback from all the department heads on the program needs, the space needs. We've, of course, you all approved the committee's recommendation last month about looking at Site B located just at the northeast corner of Washington and Maine. So, we are going to proceed into next steps with them based off of your approval tonight. So, with that, city staff is recommending approving to amend the contract with NARATE. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Any questions or discussion? All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the request.
We have a motion and a second, roll call. We have no preview ordinances. Item 11 is ordinances. 11A, consideration, discussion, and possible adoption of ordinance number 3890. Trevor Dennis.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council, and Mr. Spurgeon. At the last meeting, council directed me to draft an ordinance that adds the Muskogee Nation flag as a list of, as one of the approved flags to fly at city facilities. This ordinance accomplishes the same. I happy to answer any questions you may have on it.
Any questions or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call. Item B is the emergency clause.
Make a motion to accept the emergency clause.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call. All right. Item 12, that was quick. Item 12 with remarks by governing body members. Today is the end of World War II, and September 2nd, yep. And I had the opportunity and honor to go to the Claremore Veterans Center and be a part of a ruptured duck ceremony and honor nine World War II veterans. So, that was pretty amazing that we had nine. Five lived right there in Claremore at the Veterans Center. So, that was pretty amazing, so.
Can you elaborate on ruptured duck?
So, they, they had, so when they got discharged or dismissed back then, they would, they had created, this is my understanding, they had created an eagle symbol for them. And when it was created, it looked more like a duck rather than an eagle. And so, and they were leaving so fast, like, being discharged and shipped out so fast, they were jokingly said it looked like a ruptured duck. And so, this is the challenge coin that they all received. So, I received one of those. And he's a mighty-looking duck, though, I mean, because I think, because he wanted to be an eagle. He was supposed to be an eagle. But, so Scott Hannaford with Bison Challenge Coins, he created these, created the whole event and just said, "Do you think we can do this?" I'm like, "We can do it, let's pull it off." So, he did an amazing job putting this event together. And they had a room full of veterans and honored them immensely. But that's where the ruptured duck came from. But it was on their exit from World War II. And their poor eagle who looked like an exploding duck, apparently. But it was a great honor to be a part of that, so. You guys had a fun weekend.
Yes. Anybody want to talk about it? So, we got to go to Colorado Springs and look at the Ford Amphitheater, which is the same venue that is building our amphitheater here in Broken Arrow. And I will say, it was very nice. I mean, we've seen a few other ones, but this one, I'm glad ours is going to look like this one. It has the fire pits. And even, what I thought was really interesting, too, is even the bands, one was Winona and one was Big Little Town.
Little Big Town.
They even mentioned how beautiful the amphitheater was. They're like, "We've never been in a place like this." And they thought the people at the fire pits, like, were the martini drinkers. And then, like, the bottom, the people like that was closer to the stage were like the beer drinkers or whatever, I don't know, because it was so many different levels. But it was very, it was very nice. We got rained on a couple of times, but then we dried out really quick.
Yep, that happened when I was there a year ago. Was the restaurant part finished yet in the back? Okay, that wasn't finished when I had gone up there, so.
And I think they've added some more fire pits than we were there, too.
It looked like it's on the pictures that they had, yeah. Looked amazing.
The only thing I add, she said just rain, it was a cold rain. I mean, really cold. So, it came right out of the mountains. So, but it was great. I was really impressed. I really was. And I really have gotten excited about our own amphitheater. I sent a picture over to my son, who's an architect, because I took a picture of it, and he was just amazed by it. So, just kind of excited.
Eight thousand seats, and we're going to have 12,500.
I think you said, what, 30% larger facility?
And we are going to have a roof.
Yes, we will.
And size, roof and size. Yeah, so it does, we're going to, that Vice Mayor Parks can stay dry. I also like, too, that a lot of our department heads went to, like, you know, the emergency, police, fire, our emergency manager, just to kind of see how they ran things, how smoothly they were. And then, they'll be able to put their touch on ours.
It's been a year since they've been open. And I can tell you, I was there the opening night, and we, how they ushered 8,000 people out, I have no idea. But we all got out safely, quickly, into our cars. I'm assuming it probably was even smoother with you guys going, I mean, which is mind-blowing that you could get that many people out.
Well, when we called our Uber, it was like 20-minute wait for our Uber, and then we were out.
Well, it's a party, or so.
But it was a party.
That's right.
It's for another time.
It was just like everybody disappeared at one time. There wasn't anybody there, and the gates were closed, locked. So, they emptied it fast.
And that's part of, that's what they want, is expedited exit, and you're not sitting in traffic for two hours. And they want a pleasant experience for.
I think one reason why they emptied it fast is they turned off the fire pits, and it made it very cold very fast.
Whatever it takes.
So, everyone cleared out really quick, and they turned off the lights.
I always thought it was for looks, but it was for heat. Except for Counselor Pickle, he was on the wrong end.
I was on the wrong end.
So, we learned a lot, learned a lot, and made us all excited about our upcoming event.
Absolutely. All right, anything else?
I was just going to say that I wanted to thank Mr. Spurgeon and his team for putting this together for us because it was an absolutely wonderful weekend. And I could, I can't tell you how excited I am for Broken Arrow for what's coming. It's just going to be amazing, you know, and be great for our city. As well as just kind of a reach out to our citizens and BA that as a council, we take feedback very seriously. And your GeoBond presentations the other night, I was, continue to just be impressed at the professionalism that your directors have, your employees have, in taking the time to really explain what's all involved and how it benefits everyone. Because not only do, and it literally Because not only do, and it literally benefits everyone. So you can't think of, well, that's, you know, that's just, I don't go to the parks, so that's just a parks thing. No, it benefits everyone for sure. And you guys do an absolutely amazing job. And I just recommend that all the citizens that can come out tomorrow to the Varsey Club, come out and check it out.
Ditto. Yep, absolutely. City Manager?
I do, I have two things, Mayor. Let me follow up on the, actually, we, the weekend was called an operational assessment. And the purpose of it was, as Counselor Ford started and everyone else actually added to, was number one is that obviously when you get 12, potentially 12,500 people together, you need to have an operational plan on how you're going to locate. First concert, the mayor was there, had to implement it. So we had both of our chiefs and we had an emergency manager coordinator. And they actually, I think Kenny Schwab has a book full of notes on things that we actually need to make sure we take in mind as we go through this process. And obviously, when the council members making, approving the type of investment that we made, it look, it's really good when you can actually see the venue itself and the conveniences that are going to exist, such as the rideshare. Our rideshare dropped us right off at the gate. They have the state-of-the-art metal detection system, which was actually just, Counselor Green was explaining that. And then if I would have ordered the Uber, it probably would have been in there in two minutes. It was just a few minutes we actually left. But watching the crowd disperse, and that was one of the first things when I brought this to council members at the time was, we want it to be a really good experience. And you can see the improvements they've made and the ones that council's approved. It's going to be something very similar for people to get in and get out of there. And then I think what was interesting was there's always an augmented value. Is, is our chief of police and fire chief and Counselor Green got to go to the real-time crime center for the city of Colorado Springs. And Chief Moore was updating me on, on that as well as Counselor Green. Obviously, we're working on implementing something similar and they were showing how the benefits of having that center there and the drone that they, Counselor Green was explaining this. And so there was not only value in terms of the amphitheater itself, but was looking at a city that is further ahead than we are in what, you know, Chief Arnold's vision, the council and so forth, and what we want to try to do to help basically improve our public safety. And so overall, it was, it was a great weekend. And it is very exciting when you finally see it to realize that about this time next year, if not a little sooner, that you're going to have that venue in Broken Arrow. So speaking of events, I want to mention this because I'm just, I'm very, I was very excited about it. So at the beginning of August, State Representative Ross Ford, who we all know, contacted me about an initiative that the Speaker of the House decided to implement. And that was called a Capitol to Community. And they selected four cities around the state of Oklahoma to go out and to showcase that city. Ross, without question, volunteered Broken Arrow. And so he said he had this vision of what he wanted to do to showcase our city, which really consisted of our, the city, the chamber, James Bell's team, Chuck Perry's team. And we had that opportunity on the 21st of August to showcase this for somewhere between 20 and 30 state legislatures, the state legislator. Now, outside of the state Capitol, between the months of February and May, you don't get that kind of opportunity. And so we put on what I consider to be a top-notch show. The feedback that we've received, I've received from, from a number of representatives in addition to what Representative Ross has shared was, they now understand why when they hear things that are happening in Broken Arrow, what's happening, how's Broken Arrow doing, they, they understand it now. And it was just a great day for us to be able to showcase the city, for the chamber to be able to showcase, as well as the school district. And so I just want to thank the council members. I, I do think we set the standard for, for how we go forward. But the relationships with the speaker is extremely important because he's here for a number of years. And so I think that we're building that relationship with our lobbyist. Our lobbyist was there, Steve Edwards was there, he made time. He knew, he knew probably every one of those. But when you look at our contingency, we had other representatives from, from Broken Arrow that were there, plus Representative Ford. And I just, I could tell you, it couldn't have been a better day. And I want to thank the council members for, for helping be there and to basically promote our community, as well as James's team did a great job. And James speaking and Chuck Perry, he nailed it on education. And then actually, the, the mental health forum at lunch, there were so many questions that it ran longer. And, and we had to keep on schedule. So I think that it was, it was a tremendous hit. So something just, you know, this is what's going on in Broken Arrow here, so we do it and they got to see it firsthand.
Didn't we also have the Education Secretary here?
We did. Impromptu, the week before that, Secretary McMahon was here and actually was able to actually go through our school district for the Vanguard. Superintendent Perry said that was, was, it was wonderful to get that time with her, answer all of her questions. And so that tells you a little bit about, the first thought was, hey, listen, if she's got time, she wanted to come to Broken Arrow.
It was amazing to hear, they found out at 6:00 PM the night before. And then hosted her the next morning, so that was amazing.
Thank you, Mayor, that's all I have.
I kind of feel like that's how it should be though, like surprise. You want to see how it is every, every day. You don't have time to like clean up and straighten the pictures.
One of the cool things about that was they told the story about, you know, how she was here and she was touring, for instance, Vanguard. And she got the, the dog and pony show from all the staff. And she saw a student who was sitting by themselves and went over and talked to that student. And the student gave the exact same reviews, the exact same story that the staff was giving about how important that, that facility was.
And not only that, she kept saying, so this is a charter school, right? And they would say, no, it's a public school. And it would come back to saying, this is, this is charter school, right? Nope, this is public dollars at work right here, so. And as far as the representatives coming, our businesses that we got to tour were amazing. So thank, thank you guys for setting that up. They, they were amazing, so. All right. We have no executive session.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
The motion and a second, roll call. All right, call the Broken Arrow Municipal Authority, meaning to order. Are there any, oh, roll call, sorry.
Pickle.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Wimpy.
Here.
Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The motion is second, roll call. Item 5 is public hearings, appeals, presentations, recognitions and awards, there are none. Item 6, general authority business. 6A, consideration discussion and possible approval of award of the lowest responsible bid to Crossland Heavy Contractors and authorize execution of a contract, construction contract for Vertigous River Water Treatment Plant. Charlie Bright.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Trustees, General Manager. My name's Charlie Bright, I'm the Director of Engineering and Construction. For you tonight is award of a fourth pump, raw water pump at our Vertigous River Water Treatment Plant. This is to pull water, raw water out of the Vertigous River. Currently today, we have three pumps. Each pump can pump approximately eight and a half million gallons of water per pump. And so our plant is rated for around 30 million gallons. So this will A, put us over the capacity of the plant, but B, it also provides a lot of redundancy. So today, if we're at our peak day on water, we're right at about the, right at about the capacity of the three pumps running together on our peak day. And so this really provides redundancy in case one pump is down or we need to be doing maintenance on a pump or anything else. So now we have an extra pump in place, you know, for whatever happens at the time. I'll also say that we are also recommending award of ad alternate, one of the ad alternates on this project, which was to include the piping and the wiring for eventually a fifth pump being put in place. So as our capacity grows on the plant and we need more water coming in, and it still creates that redundancy. But due to the amount of funds we had available, we aren't putting a fifth pump in. We're only just going to do the wiring and the framework for the fifth pump. So Crossland Heavy was our low bidder for a little under $1.1 million. Happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call. Any remarks by governing body members? Thank you, Charlie. City Manager?
Yes, I do, Madam Chair, just a couple of things. First off, this Thursday, several members of council are actually going to be taking a tour of Mid-American Industrial Park. And that was scheduled with Amber Miller, who's here this evening. I was going to be able to attend, but I won't be able to attend because Incog is doing the final interviews for the Executive Director for the Incog organization. And so I apologize that I won't be able to make it. I have no idea how long those are going to run. We have Thursday and Friday. And I, we've got two really good finalists for that position. I'm excited that actually, especially when we're trying to, in the process of negotiating an agreement for, for water and for the, the storage tower there, for council members to see what's going on. A lot of the residents that work there live in Broken Arrow. They've got a lot more opportunities that are happening there. So I think this is going to be great. And I want to thank Amber for, and James for scheduling that for the council members. And I apologize that I won't be able to make it. I also want to mention utilities is, right now, we are doing intersection work at Aspen and Jasper. And that is phase one of the widening of Aspen from Tucson down to Indian Springs Sports Complex, essentially. And I know Charlie's team worked very, very hard, Travis, his whole team. We needed the help of ONG. And ONG actually, we, we worked out a few things they had concern. I specifically want to mention Elizabeth Osborne, some of you may remember her when she worked for the Tulsa Chamber. She got the meetings together and helped us actually make sure we worked through whatever was necessary. And as mentioned tonight, there are also, we're starting, they're starting their work at the intersection of Lynn Lane and Washington. Because we're going to get those intersections taken care of. And also eventually, we'll be back at Tucson and Aspen. And so I just want to mention ONG and their efforts to help us move, move things along and Charlie's team as well. The other thing I wanted to mention, I'm excited about this and I apologize, is next week is municipal, is the Municipal League's Annual Conference. And as a part of this, we submitted our COBEU program for the Innovation Award and we've been selected as a finalist for our Innovation Award, which the, we've been invited, as most of the council members stay Thursday evening for the dinner. So obviously, they'll make the announcement. So a lot of hard work went in to actually put together a video and also explain our COBEU program and how it's transitioned from understanding departments to more leadership succession. So I just want to let the council members know we are up for that award. And it'd be really nice if, just a recognition of being nominated. But obviously, there's a chance we could, we could win, so.
Exciting.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. There is no executive session.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
The motion and a second, roll call. Call the Broken Arrow Economic Development Authority to order, roll call.
Pickle.
Here.
Green.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Parks.
Here.
Wimpy.
Here.
Let's see, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call. There are no public hearings, appeals, presentation, recognitions or awards, no general authority business. Remarks by governing body members? City Manager?
Just one thing, Madam Chair, and that is, the first meeting in October, I'm going to ask council to formally, to actually formally create the Downtown Master Plan Update Committee. And I'll be working with Rocky's team to actually come up with some recommendations on the format of that committee. It's going to, to recommend that the council members select individuals to serve on that in addition to many of our partners. And so this is really just like, you know, a two-minute warning, so to speak, since we're in football season, that council members will have to be thinking about interested parties in terms of the Downtown Master Plan Updates, so approval of the process and then the appointment of individuals, approximately 20, I would think there's going to be approximately 20 individuals. Rocky has the request for qualifications out for the consultant now to help basically facilitate the process. And so I would anticipate more likely the first meeting in October, asking council to take some formal action. So that's what I wanted to, to mention to you because it's economic development related. That's all I have.
All right, we have no executive session.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
Wait, no.
Oh, I thought we were doing voice.